Welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, our PC work session. I would like to call this Planning Commission session to order for Thursday, September 4th, 2025. My name is Jack Karun and I'm the Vice Chair of the Clark County Planning Commission. Before we begin tonight, I would like to announce that our Planning Commission work sessions are hybrid, both in person and via WebEx. For the virtual and in-person members of the Planning Commission and staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off or muted unless you are speaking. There will be, there will not be any public comment during this work session, but members of the public can watch and listen. This evening's agenda is planned as follows. We'll do the ADA Transition Plan updates and then comments from the members of the Planning Commission, and then we'll adjourn. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Jack. My name is Michael Salas Jr. and I have been working for the county for about, oh, it's a little over five years now. And I think I've only been around the Planning Commission probably a couple of times. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background of myself. I come here, actually, I was a plane transportation planner for Red Plains. And so we would actually work on projects for tribes throughout the country. And so we do, you know, transportation inventory and those type of things. And then I used to work for WashDOT for a while. And I had the opportunity to work on the last way by a duck and some of the bigger projects up in the sort of Puget Sound area. So I just wanted to kind of let you guys know who I am a little bit better because I'm certain that you'll see me again. So with that said, I, what we're going to talk about today is the ADA Transition Plan and also the self-evaluation report. They're one in the same where the self-evaluation report actually gives us the current data that we have for ADA deficiencies. And the transition plan helps implement the plan from the concurrent things that we've identified during our investigation. Next slide. So basically what we're going to talk about today is what is, you know, ADA? And then House Bill 1181 and the requirements under House Bill 1181 for the transition plan and ADA. And what we're evaluating and the outstanding issues for the self-valuation report. And then sort of the next steps. Next slide. So the first is what is ADA? And it's basically the American with Disabilities Act. And it was enacted in 1990. And it's a civil rights law that prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities. And Title II of the ADA requires public service services and public transportation accessible to those with disabilities as part of the update. And before the ADA Transition Plan is complete, we do a self-evaluation report to identify and conduct an inventory and map out those county transportation deficiencies throughout the, throughout, not just the, it would be the unincorporated part of the county, unincorporated urban growth area part of the county. Next slide. So this all came about from the standpoint of we were going to make an update to the ADA Transition Plan to begin with. But because of the comp plan, we kind of shelved it. And then House Bill 1181 came out and required us to finish the ADA Transition Plan sooner than what we anticipated. So it becomes part of the comp plan update and also part of the climate change initiative. Those are the two major things that cause, you know, us to take it off the shelf and start moving forward with the, with the plan itself. The, the ADA Transition Plan and self-evaluation report are intended to, for the following, identify physical obstacles with that limit the accessibility of facilities to individuals with disabilities. Describe the methods to be used to make facilities accessible. Provide a schedule for, excuse me, for making the access modifications. And identify the public officials responsible for implementation of the transition plan. Right now, we, our contact person is Michelle Schuster. But ultimately, it's Ken Leader that's responsible for the implementation of the plan itself. Next slide. The self-evaluation report will include the county is required to perform a self-evaluation report and its current facilities relative to the accessibility requirements of the ADA accessibility standards. Transportation facilities in the report are those that make up the pedestrian access route and pedestrian circulation plan and the public right-of-way as defined in Clark County Code 4350.350. Types of facilities being evaluated in the report will include curb ramps, sidewalks, and traffic control signals. The report will identify barriers to the accessibility of these facilities as defined by ADA. Next slide. This here is information from 2020 on what those look like as far as the curb ramps are concerned. And you can kind of tell the ones that, that are colored in sort of a dark green are those that are in compliant. And then it kind of goes downhill from there. So that kind of gives you a little bit of a sense of the amount of area that we're looking at and what we're trying to cover. Next slide. This one in particular, it just gives you sort of the standards that we would look at for curb ramps. And this is consistent with what WashDOT uses in their manual for ADA. So those are sort of the things that we'll use for, for the county. Next slide. This here is sort of the deficiencies for sidewalks. On here, it says that there's 7,144 sidewalk deficiencies or defects. But I can tell, I can guarantee you there's a lot more. This information was from 2020 and now that we're in 2025, the scenario doesn't get a whole lot better, but it doesn't get a whole lot worse neither. One of the parts that I wanted to let you guys know from the standpoint of what are we doing now, so to speak, is that we look at curb ramps and sidewalks on a case-by-case basis based on road maintenance. So if we have a road maintenance project and we have one of those scenarios where there's an ADA improvement as part of it and we have the budget to do it, then we will go, we as the county will make those changes. If we don't have the budget, then we won't. We'll just focus on the maintenance of the road itself. So that's part of the reason why we're doing this is to provide that specific project that's associated with ADA that's not part of maintenance or part of some other project that is its own project. Next slide. So this gives you sort of one of the barriers that we run into for sidewalk where this is an uplift or vertical uplift. Next slide. This is obvious, you know, there's, not only there's no curb ramps, but there's no sidewalk. So you have a missing sidewalk there. Next slide. This here, actually, this is what happened in my neighborhood where you actually have a mail post, mailbox posts where it was part of the development at the time. And it's become an obstacle for, not only for wheelchairs to get through, but those that have limited visibility don't, can't really navigate this type of scenario. And I've heard this from a few people with sight deficiencies with regards to this type of scenario. As in, there's more than 900 of these type of mailboxes in the county. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Commissioner Halbert, I see a lot of fences being built right up to the sidewalk, clearly not on the property, mostly because people don't understand where their property line is compared to the sidewalk. Is that one of the deficiencies that you'd be looking at?
I think that one in particular would be on a case-by-case basis. What we normally look at is the actual structure of the sidewalk itself. If it's something where it's a frit fence that's impeding on the, the right-of-way, then we'll look at it on a case-by-case basis. Any other questions before I move on?
Cool. So, oh. This is Ron, this is Commissioner Haroun. What is the fix for, for that post? Is it expanding the sidewalk or is it removal of, of that obstacle?
And I would say there's a little bit of both is in the, if you want to go to the previous slide. So in this case, what they would look at is whether or not the sidewalk is five feet in, in width, because that's state standard, that's the federal standard. The county and the state are looking at potentially expanding that to six feet. Hasn't been done yet, but I can see it going in that direction. And the other is to remove the, the mailbox itself. So once the obstacle is removed, then it becomes wide enough for wheelchairs to get through as well as not an obstacle for those that are visually impaired. Okay, go back to the next slide. Thanks. So this here is a accessible push-button sort of standards that we look for when we're putting them in place. The good thing about the county with regards to this is that there's 101 APS systems on our, on our light system. There's, we've had three deficiencies. So from that perspective, it's been really, really good. And, and so, but at the same time, there's ways to make it better where we look at schools and other like libraries and, and places where we don't have those in place where we probably should. Next slide. So this gives a indication of the problem here is that we may have a deficient with regards to the curb ramp. But the bigger issue is where the, the push-button bracket is located, which is on the other side of the curb. So it becomes difficult to get to. Next slide.
I have a comment on that. Can you tell me where that gas station is?
I couldn't tell you.
I like the prices.
Good to know, duly noted. So this here is basically the outstanding issues that are left for the self-evaluation report and transition plan. So we have, we have current facilities that were inventory and mapping, GIs analysis and priority mapping. And we are using data from 2019 and a little bit of 2025. And then we are working on public outreach and as well. Not sure if we're going to still do the survey, but we'll have that public outreach. The ADA Transition Plan, which is the second part of this, is, will describe the methods that we use to make the, the facilities accessible and provide a schedule to make the access modifications. So basically it helps us prioritizing, you know, what's going to happen first? What's going to occur over the next two years? One or two years with regards to the projects that we know we're going to be able to have, will have to do. That's what we'll be working on next. Next slide. So this is kind of a draft schedule that we kind of put together. Right now, we're, you know, doing the sort of the, let's see. We're at the Planning Commission work session. Before we got to that, we also did a work session with council. We also are constantly doing public outreach. We'll have meetings coming up with neighborhoods on the October 13th, 14th, and perhaps even November 19th. The other thing that we're working on is having two open houses. And they're coming up probably in November, early December. We'll have one more, we'll probably end up with one more work session with the PC when we're done with the plant, with the transition plan. And we'll also have one for the council as well. And then shortly after that, we'll have the public hearing with you guys first and then with the council. Next slide. And now I can open up to discussion or questions or comments.
Hey Commissioners, Mark, did you have any questions?
Well, obviously, money will be an issue. As the county budget, do you have anything already here, Mark, for this and ongoing, or is this new?
This is partially new, partially not. The part where I discussed earlier, where we would actually be looking for funding with regards to making these particular, to, you know, just having their own project, that's, once we're actually completed with the ADA Transition Plan, it opens us up to funding that we weren't able to access because we didn't have a plan. So now we have this plan with this information is given to the state. The state identifies what our priorities are and they'll look at the budget that goes along with it. And we would be able to harness some of that funding.
Secondary question is, and thank you for that, that makes sense. You've got such a wide variety of, if you made a list, I'm sure, you know, you showed us several pictures and every one of those was a different type of issue. Are, do you prioritize by category? Are you prioritizing what's more of a high-profile, a bigger risk? So do that first?
So, yeah. So when it comes to the prioritization of this, it partially, it's identified on, on the actual deficiency itself. If it's something where like we have missing sidewalks or we don't have a ramp in place, then it goes back to where is this located? Is it located next to a school where it should be rectified pretty quickly? Or is it somewhere else where it's not as high on the priority list, but yet it's still, will still be on the list? So the good thing is that we will definitely have a group of people from Public Works that will help identify what those look like. But the, the transition plan itself will help identify some of those criteria that we, that will be used to prioritize those projects in the future.
Do you see that when you have your, your plan, that all of that will be included?
Yes, that will be included as part of it because it, I mean, we're using this as a tool to help us identify those, those deficiencies.
Thank you.
Eldon.
Thank you. So you said, you mentioned after the transition plan is made, then the state will prioritize?
No, the state won't prioritize. The county will.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. They're just, they're just homing the money.
I was going to ask, why is the state going to prioritize? Right, right. Because these are all, this is just unincorporated.
Correct. It's unincorporated, but it's in the urban growth boundary. Yeah.
So.
So rural areas are not included in this.
All right. So, so the jurisdiction for getting these all fixed will be county Public Works?
Yes.
And you, you mentioned that, that prior to HB, what was it, 11 something?
1181.
1181? That, that the work that you were doing was kind of like in the back burner then, and then it was brought up?
Well, we had the comp plan come up. And so we shifted gears, you know, pivoted to the comp plan and then realized that, well, because of the climate, because of House Bill 1181, it became a requirement.
It wasn't a requirement about ADA transitions?
It was. It was just a different timeframe. Where the requirement for us to move forward wasn't as dire when it became more of a requirement for two other portions, which is the, the complaint itself and then the climate change initiative.
Right. That's it. Kyle? Brian?
Sure. Hey, Mike, on page six, the curb ramp visual inspection that looks like a shotgun hit the map. How many, how many intersections do you have total that you have monitored? And what's the total amount of dots on this page?
And so, don't, well, for this page, I'm not sure how many dots there are. But right now, just from, you know, I'm in the midst of pulling some of this information together. Just to give you sort of a notion of what we're looking at. Just for curb ramps, I think I, I saw something like 9,044, somewhere around there. And, and that information, you'll see a lot of that, more of that type of information in the actual self-evaluation report itself. And, and you'll see the connection between not just what we have for curb ramps, but also what we have for sidewalks. And a little bit up close, a closer look at what we're really talking about. The last time that this work was done, which was back in, between 2018 and 19, there was a little over, I think it was over 2 million feet of missing sidewalk. And so it came out to be like, I think it's 486 miles of missing sidewalks. So that it just gives you sort of the, the, how much work really needs to be done in this, in this category. The one thing, and I'm gonna be upfront, what we did not address, which we will probably address in the future, are driveway ramps. Those are not addressed as part of this. It's not required as much, but I can see it being required in the future. And we are starting to track this information. It's just we don't, we don't have the bandwidth at this point, at least Public Works doesn't at this moment. But that will be part of the ADA transition, transition plan in the future.
Could you expand? Yeah, that's.
So driveway ramp is where you have a driveway and you have that steep and then it goes to driveway and then it steeps on the other side. Well, there is, that becomes a hazard for, not just for those with the, you know, sight hazard, but definitely a wheelchair hazard where you can't really navigate the width based on the steepness and then having it go at an angle. What happens is that it becomes, the wheelchair becomes uneasy and unstable. Yep.
My daughter has problems with that right now.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So that, that will be coming, but it won't be part of this. And I just want to make sure, I mentioned it upfront, so there's no surprises where you guys may come up to, to the notion that this is not being addressed yet.
So Mike, I assume that all new developments and roadwork meet the current standards and you're going back and looking at deficiencies from the past 100 years of development in Clark County and then trying to identify what is still, needs to be brought up to a certain standards. And in my experience of even building in Clark County for 30 years, the standards change continuously. And work that we did 20 years ago that we thought was ADA standard is today deficient. And it just seems crazy that you'd have to identify that intercept, or that ramp, even though it's working as a deficient ramp that wish, that's on your list.
Right.
And it seems like there should be some, well, I assume part of the evaluation process is, okay, it's a ramp, it's working. And compared to areas that don't have any ramps or, or even driveway ramps that are very hazardous.
Right. And I think as, you know, I think it's going to be pretty easy to go through the list at first. For what's a priority, it becomes a lot more difficult as you kind of move along and you're making those improvements where it becomes a little bit more tricky to identify what the, what's a priority down the road.
And Mike, another question. Like on the curb ramp visuals here and all the different dots, is there even an ability to give a percentage of?
Yes, I do have that. And, and you guys will see more of this in the, in the upcoming self-evaluation report itself.
Yeah, just, it, just great to know, you know, do we have one and two elements or three or four? And what percentage of the deficiencies are really, really missing the mark, I guess.
Right, right. And we do have, I do have that information to provide to you guys at a later date, for sure.
Or yeah, or even just update this plan for the next time.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thanks, Mike.
Absolutely.
This is Eldon. I have one more per legal. So county has now identified all these deficiencies to the ADA. Has anybody sued the county over these things? We don't want?
To my knowledge, nobody has sued just because they exist. But oh yeah, we've been sued because people have tripped on the sidewalk pieces that are elevated or where there's a hole instead of a curb ramp. Or yes, we have been sued.
That's been my experience too in the city, maybe not so much in the county. But isn't the property owner that's adjacent to that sidewalk responsible to repair that sidewalk when it's been identified?
I don't know. And I truly don't know. If it is something that was built to satisfy a county requirement or somebody thinks that the county should have inspected it, believe me, they're gonna, they're gonna try to pull the county in because they believe that the county has lots of money.
So this is Commissioner Haroun. Along those lines, the, I'll follow Brian. This city has one or two individuals just dedicated to kind of like sidewalk code enforcement. And they go around and either it's complaint or it's based on their surveys that they've done. Because as homeowners downtown, we're, and I literally, they just talked to me about one of my properties. We're tearing down the house and replacing all the sidewalk, but I bought it and it was messed up. And there was already a code case on it. That the homeowner immediately adjacent is responsible for that sidewalk. And so if a tree is lifting up the sidewalk, they're responsible for remediating with the tree or doing pruning and doing that. And then, and then if they don't, then the city will come in and do it and then bill them for it. So I didn't know if we had the, if, if that's a, again, you know, like if it's, if it is a county, you know, just a city ordinance or if, if, if it is in fact like a state law, I don't know. And, and enforcement comes across pretty strong, like sometimes it's a notification of like, were you aware that you're responsible for, you know, fixing and maintaining your sidewalk in front of your, your property line? You know, and then working with them to help them do that.
So yeah, I mean, I mean, we, you know, this is, that might be the next step, you know? But, uh, for us to identify what's the out there now is clearly what this is focused on.
Have, uh, Jack, I've also, uh, had that happen on my projects in the city of Vancouver, and where we've been tagged to repair the sidewalk, not necessarily to bring it up to the five-foot standard. If it was a four-foot sidewalk, then we repair that. Um, but, um, also when it comes to intersections, of course, new developments are required to re, uh, to update the ADA ramps most often as part of the permitting process. And, and just to make sure that if a permit comes in, or a request, or an application comes in, that, that, um, it, it gets looked at, uh, uh, or tagged as a deficient intersection, that a developer would be responsible to, uh, bring up to speed.
Right, and every, every, um, uh, development, uh, application that comes through that Susan and I look at, that's part of it, is looking at ADA as a whole, yeah.
Any other questions?
So is there any sort of enforcement in, included in this, this ADA plan, or is this?
This is just identifying and being able to prioritize projects that the, that the county is, I would say, responsible for, but it doesn't go into enforcement type of scenarios.
Okay, and, and then is there any coordination with capital improvement projects? Cause I would say one of the, the biggest ADA deficiencies is probably missing sidewalks, especially in the, the, the UGA, because, you know, you've got a parcel that develops, and then you've got one that sits, you know, undeveloped for forever, and you've got, people have to then transition over to walking on the road, basically. And so is there, is there any coordination on, on capital improvement projects, especially for, for properties that?
Yeah, I mean, we have that now, even from the standpoint of as we look at, you know, short plats, for example, and where we're in an existing area where you have a flag lot, we will look at those areas on accessibility. And, and so that's, that's part of what we do now. Um, this becomes more of a, uh, a, a capital project in itself, uh, where you actually have an ADA project, not a so, short plat, or any other type of development, but it has its own project.
Hmm, okay, yeah, I just, I, I just think, you know, that, that, kind of as, as Jack had mentioned, um, and Brian, that if we focus on, on just the curb ramps and stuff like that, I think we start to miss some of the bigger picture things, like missing sidewalks, and, and where you've got pedestrians walking on a thirty-five, forty mile an hour road.
Oh yeah, yeah, absolutely, and that's why it's, the sidewalk portion of this is, uh, is also a crucial part of our, um, our analysis as we think about what we have out on the field and what needs to be repaired.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Alright. Um, is there, for the good of the order, is there any other comments from anyone, Oliver?
No, um, all I can share with the planning commission is that we will soon be, staff is working on, you saw the, uh, goals and policies of the, uh, comp plan that we have come before you. We are now working on the text itself, which will include some updates to numbers, and, uh, taking another look at the text itself. So you'll be seeing that, believe, starting in October. And we will also be coming to you on the proposed housing code changes to multifamily districts. We will be coming to you in October with our consultant to share with you what is being proposed. We have shared that with the council, um, so we will come to the planning commission. It's all going to be, in terms of timing, you may see that before the adoption of the comp plan, or you may see that simultaneously as we go through the plan update, uh, adoption. But that will come before you in October. You are aware that our council did, uh, we are bringing Econotwist and Triangle and Associates to do the ARG study. Uh, that ARG study will be, uh, I think our timeline to have that completed will be November fourth. There will be one or two open houses just to, um, present to the public how, in terms of methodology, following the work criteria, what the consultant will be looking at and soliciting some input from the public. That open house, the first one will be September thirtieth at the Barrow Ground Community Centre. So you're welcome to come and listen to, um, the consultant share with the public how they're proceeding with that study. The second open house will be in October. A place and time has not been, uh, determined yet. And we're also planning on issuing the draft environmental impact statement. That will come out December, now, October first. And I think we have shared with you, we will allow for sixty day comment. So that, uh, is on our radar, and I can say that our consultant on the environmental, our work is really working hard to meet that October, uh, first, uh, release of the DEIS. And, um, if you're interested, I'm not asking that you come, but if you're free, the council will be having, um, a work session with all the jurisdiction, I believe, September seventeenth, uh, to just have conversation on the comp plan. I don't, I don't have an agenda, the agenda will be prepared by the council's office, so. But that conversation with the cities will be September seventeenth. I don't have the exact time, but usually council time, no, work session starts around nine o'clock. It may go for about ninety minutes, but that's the date for that, uh, conversation with our local jurisdiction. So that is my, uh, brief update on what's happening on the comp plan. But for you, you will start seeing the, the text of the comp plan, and then the housing conversation in terms of the proposed code relating to multifamily. So that is my, uh, update to the planning commission. Before I leave, I want to introduce Susan Bosner, uh, she's a new staff in our shop, in our transportation. Susan, I've been with, I have worked for Clark County before, uh, worked for the city of Vancouver before, and the city of Portland. We're happy to have her back, uh, so, uh, you will be seeing her from time to time. So that's my, uh, comment to the planning commission.
Excellent, um, I got, received an, uh, um, an email, um, and so this is a question for Chris. The Growth Management Hearings Board of Central Puget Sound invalidated the city of Mercer Island's comprehensive plan. And, um, they held that the city's approach to planning for and accommodating housing affordability to all economic segments of the population was insufficient because it, it did not identify the funding sources that are necessary to actually build said housing. So I'm wondering, does that board affect us? And does that hearing have some consequences for us?
So a couple things, first of all, the statement isn't true. The Growth Board did not invalidate anything. As a matter of fact, on page two of that decision, the Growth Board explicitly said, we're not going to invalidate this plan. So, starting from there, that doesn't say what the significance is for the county's planning. It just, when I see something like that, that's a clear error, I go, huh, did they read it? Um, but
That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, so I've read part of the decision, I haven't read the whole decision, but, um, a couple thoughts. The requirements in terms of housing are different for cities and the county. So the requirements for planning are not the same for, say, Mercer Island as they are for King County. And you can say the same thing about the cities in this county. Um, and the Growth Board in that case was clearly looking at a city, which had different requirements from the counties. So that's, that is one distinction.
Are they different? Do we have a different Growth Boards than they have, or is it one state Growth Board?
Oh, that's complicated.
Sorry.
So, there, there used to be three different Growth Boards. Each one had three members. Now there are, what, five members or seven members that are Growth Board members? And a couple of them are assigned to our part of the state. Whenever we have an appeal in front of them, we have to have at least one of the people from our part of the state on the board. Likewise, if you have an appeal of something that's in King County, you have to have somebody from that part of the state. Uh, not necessarily from King County, but from what's called the Central Puget Sound region. Other than that, they kind of like mix and match. So you have to have at least one, I don't know if you have to have two from your part of the world, but you're likely to get somebody from Spokane. And is their decision precedential? Um, yeah. So, if that answered that question, um.
So is it, it's kind of like, um, I'll say like, if you take us, the Ninth Circuit, and then there's like four judges or three judges that they grab, that's kind of how the boards work?
Except that there is a requirement that at least somebody on your panel be from your part of the, of the, from your region. Ours is called the Western Washington region, and it includes both counties that are north of Central Puget Sound, and counties that are south, and are west of the Cascades. So, um, so I talked about a distinction between requirements for the cities and requirements for the counties, and this board was talking specifically about the requirements for the cities. Those don't necessarily all apply to us. They talked about the city having aggregated its income bands. Y'all have seen those income bands, and you say, well, what does that mean to be low income? What does it mean to be moderate income? You know, those are the income bands we're talking about, which are defined in the statute. So we know what they mean. Before that statute was passed, the city of Mercer Island started its planning because their plan was due last year. And they made some of their decisions and some of their initial studies prior to the passage of that statute that has the income band requirements in it. So that's different from us. And then, as I understand it, um, Oliver and I were speaking about this this afternoon, and his assessment was that the city of Mercer Island had very strongly resisted providing middle housing in its plan, and providing multifamily. And so, have we done that? No. So, is it completely irrelevant to what the county does? No, it's not, but some parts of that decision are.
Anything else?
I, I, please summarize it very well, and I think, um, what that also says is that we have to look at the way that our county-wide planning policies is structured. I did, when we come to you, we said the county-wide planning policy is what binds the county and the cities. So we have to be really careful in what that county-wide planning policy says. Secondly, we have to be looked at our own unincorporated areas policies. I think when we had the conversation in housing, I did mention that some of this work could require subsidy and incentives. I don't think, I don't know, but I have to go back and look at our policies. Are there policies that require that there be subsidies and incentives? If there is, then you have to pro, you have to show how you're going to do that, not just having it as a policy. Uh, secondly, we know that, um, some of these various housing, uh, types, uh, are going to require, uh, local jurisdictions making some effort on making sure some of this prop, some of this type of housing are built. If you read recently, I believe our council was having a work session on affordable housing. Some options were discussed, and I think the county talked about with potentially having a sales stack dedicated to affordable housing. I don't know whether that will come up in their upcoming, uh, public hearing, if that's the case. If they pass that without going to, uh, the vote, which they, they can do, then that funding could be dedicated to various type of housing. So there's so many ways to look at that ruling, and I agree with Chris that the, the question of invalidity, the Growth Board was clear that they're not going to issue or invalidate Mercer Island's, uh, plan. And as Chris indicated, there was various studies that they did before, uh, some of the new housing bill came into place, that now they have to go back and find a way to reconcile. I'm aware that there were some cities in the King County that will resist in the middle housing, for example. And as a result, some of their plan have been, they haven't completed their plan because of the way King County has. Uh, so, um, there's some folks that have said, you know, does the county, Clark County, even though we do manage a large unincorporated area like, like, like an urban, are we, is, is House Bill twelve-twenty applicable to Clark County? What about House Bill eleven-ten? Are they also applicable to Clark County? Because we are operating in what is typically an urban area, we staff decided that we have to do a couple of things differently to get us close. Assuming the city wants to annex some of those areas, we have to develop in a manner that makes that very feasible for them going forward. So the ruling, as Chris indicated, yeah, some ruling that come out of the Growth Board, we have to watch for that, just to make sure that we don't fall, uh, we, we make sure that if I appeal, that our plan doesn't, or at least miss the intent of the, uh, the law itself. So, uh, it's a good ruling, we are reviewing it, it just came to our attention. Uh, but we are reviewing it to see whether there are any changes we have to make. When we did the allocation by various income band, it is the responsibility of the cities to really show how they're going to meet that.
Right. Thank you so much. Anything else? Go.
Yeah. So before you mentioned it, Oliver, I was going to ask, based off of the discussion that the council had this week regarding affordable housing and including potentially the sales tax. I mean, is it, would that be an item that we would see in front of us as affordable housing is is a planning element?
The sales tax?
Not the sales tax, but but just the general discussion that the council had on affordable housing. Would there be something that comes out of that 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 we might see in front of us or would?
Well, I
Part of that discussion.
We've been working on housing goals and policies and that has been before you and will reappear before you in the final form so that you can take a look at it and recommend it or not.
Counselor Jose Alvarez, I think the discussion that we've had with the planning commission and council just predates your time on the on the council.
Okay.
And so we did have a discussion about the amount of housing we need to provide at different income bands and get to that affordable housing portion of it. And so that'll come before you.
And I mostly ask because the, I mean, you know, we we saw the sales tax discussion come up. And and I don't know if that was something that had been discussed here before, but based off of the article that that I saw, it seemed like that was a new item. So.
Yeah, just another tool to provide that. Yeah.
It's just another tool. The council used upper funding, for example, I believe up to two million. I can't remember the amount. But that was to help in down payment. It's another program, if you will. There are some other funding that community services received that also goes into housing affordability. And those are but it doesn't have to come through the planning commission. The first thing that came to the planning commission was the HOSAP study, which predates your time, which led to the council director staff to study implementation of that HOSAP study. And the first piece of that was the middle housing code changes that came before the planning commission. And continuation of the implementation of that study is the code work on multifamily, which I said will come before you in October. No decision had been made on that. So it could come to you during hearing on as part of the comp plan or depending on when that work is completed, it may come on its own. But it will all be part of the our work on housing. And the housing element, as I indicated, there are so many new bills that passed. We have to, as part of this effort, make sure that our plan, particularly the housing element, addresses all those new bill that passed. So you're going to hear us talk about House Bill twelve twenty, House Bill eleven ten, which we have, which gets to accessory dwelling unit. We have completed some of those. So that's.
Yeah, I prefer to talk instead of talking about House Bill twelve twenty or whatever, I'd just talk about the statute. And lots of that is in thirty six seventy eight oh seven oh in the housing element part. That's that's the statute that says what has to be in your comp plan. So it's kind of a biggie and it it describes every element that you're supposed to have. So what we're talking about here is the housing element. And a lot of the bill appears in in that statute.
All right, anything else? Susan, Mike, thank you for coming. Susan, welcome aboard again. All right, word journey.